The new 2012s have arrived here at Frenchy's Ford in Messina and with them comes some great lease ideas that you're sure to like. How about this new 2012 Ford Fiesta SE hatchback that features a six-speaker premium sound system, five-year, $60,000 powertrain warranty, gets 39 miles per gallon highway and more. Right now lease this one for 39 easy payments of just $248.73 a month. That's less than $9 a day. Frenchy's Ford, 216 East Dorvus Street, Messina, or visit frenchysford.com. Ford, drive one.
This program has been brought to you by Leoneville's Beverage and Bottle Redemption Center, 301 East Dorvus Street, Messina, New York.
We're in last week to start the auditing process, the first two days, and they'll be back in December, the week of December the 12th, to do the full week of review of the financials. And they are hoping to get us a report by the end of the year, certainly by mid-January, so that we can have it for our February meeting. We've also received our bills for the retirement payments for this year. Police and fire, $437,672. Employees retirement system, $427,116. Those are payments that are coming due on December the 15th. And then, sales tax, our payment this month, which would be the first quarter of our fiscal year, amounted to $428,508.51, and this is about four and three-quarters percent more than we received in the same quarter last year. And if you projected that out over the full year, it would bring us in around $1,688,000. But as always, I caution that we're only one quarter into it, folks. I did give you though some background there, showed you the history of our sales tax and graph there for the November payments, and you can see that November, this November payment was the most that we've ever received in the month of November. I did attend the town board meeting a couple of weeks ago, at which the county treasurer was present, and he did explain some of the formulas that are used to figure the sales tax with. And we noted that in looking at the numbers that our, he has implemented the new population percentages into the formula now for the 2010 federal census, and our percentage has gone up ever so slightly, five hundredths of one percent. But it went up and not down, so that's the important thing. So anyways, that's where we stand at this point in time with sales tax. And I have no action for you tonight at this point in time. So. Any questions for Dan at all? Thank you. Closing under treasurer's board open under committee's report, inflated properties. I see Greg is here.
Do you want to discuss weight, though? Probably the new business.
Sure.
Other than that, the committee, our inflated properties, we made contact with some of the out-of-town landlords for some of the main buildings downtown. I'm sure we're not very happy right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Greg at all?
Turning on, closing under replies, open under economic development committee.
Um, I don't have anything to discuss right now.
Fire committee.
We're going to meet later this week.
We're talking about the contractors.
Yep. Personnel, please.
Uh, we've been meeting and going through applications for the GTW position, and we're going to be, we're going to go through the next one, the police committee, we're going to be sitting in an application and to help interview the applicants for that job.
Thank you. Personnel, what's the police committee? Rec committee.
Yeah. The arena, they have seven games contracted with a pro hockey team, Los Angeles Warriors, played at the Messina Arena. They had the first game last week, had over 600 people at ten, and they did, that fee for the ice rental was $125, so they made over $500 just in the rent of the ice plus the concession. They ultimately, Rick said they made over six, over $500 in concession, which is good, that's beautiful. The Howard Street, right, the ice rent shelter, lean-to, is now complete and on-site. Wanted to thank the Royal Club for sponsoring it, and there's a big logo, pro club logo on it. It's nice to have people like that, give us a hand.
Sure.
That's right. And the beach, they had 800 yards of sand was dumped and leveled at the beach. It's great. Vandalism, that to say, is still continuing. There were two wooden bicycle racks at the creative playground over there where the old high school was built, now there's only one. One was vandalized and destroyed. I don't know what we can do. We keep reading it up, and they almost have to have a cop on-site at every one of those playgrounds or something.
I know, he's stepped up his patrols in the area, it's just hit or miss.
Amen, yeah. Let's hear my report, hopefully we can hit.
Thank you. Street committee.
Um, I don't know if there are any staff members in there.
Water and sewer committee.
Ben.
Closing under three, open up under four, reading agenda, much of a dispensary reading of the agenda.
So what?
Those are good. Call favor.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Closing under four, open under five, we have initial public period, comment period. Anyone is welcome to speak, under five minutes, and obviously we ask that you keep a cordial. So, look forward to it, if anyone has anything to say, now's your chance.
What's this, this is on the...
Could you please state your name, sir?
Like a nothing line ones? This is about what we've done over so far?
It can be about anything.
Can be about anything.
Oh, yeah. Only question, only thing I have, is looking at the 32% increase from last year in the pension systems and the employee system of 31%. How are you going to handle that? You can't expect to pay a 30% increase every year on this. At what point do we, what is our future? What are you going to do about it? What can we do? You just said it's going to cost us 34%, so what are we doing to try to cut that down somehow?
Well, we're, well, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, you're looking at more and more people retiring, that's going to hit us hard. We're looking at other areas of saving monies in the negotiations with our insurance carriers. We're looking at, we have negotiations coming up with the unions and contracts are coming due, so it's going to be a question of negotiating and seeing how we can reduce costs in other areas. It's, you know...
If you just only do it and take a computer to pay Paul, it's not an, it's not an end solution.
We can raise taxes.
They can't do that either.
Well, we can't?
I know economics of Messina is not really good.
Yeah.
Okay? So what I'm trying to say is, maybe we need to come up with some, I don't know, some good ideas or something.
Well, it's a direct result. We, you know, we lost General Motors, we've lost, we've lost industry. I know the BDC is working diligently to get industry to come back in the area. I mean, it's a matter of revenue. If you don't have revenue coming in, and you keep spending, eventually, like anybody's wallet, you kind of...
But if we've got to pay this on a, you know, percentage of increase, we've got to do something to eliminate it or back it down some. Hey, I don't know how, it's not, you know, I'm not, if I had to answer, I'd tell you. But at some point, we have to stop, just keep saying, well, it went up 31%, that's what we're saying, basically.
Right.
And we paid it, or we are paying it, I don't know. We need some way of getting around this or doing something differently than what it is, because after a while, you can't raise taxes anymore.
Right.
You've got to get worse for it. You've got no industry to tax on, you're taxing the retired or you're taxing the social security people. All I'm just saying is that shouldn't we be looking some way back this down?
I think we're looking at areas like Ed mentioned.
I just don't want to transfer money from one fund to another. I want to look at somehow reduce, how to kind of reduce the costs of it out.
Right.
And I'm not sure what the answer is, but...
Well, there's only one answer, it's to get industry back into the town. If you don't have people working and paying into the system, this is...
That's such a long, far thing that...
Well, then we may close the town off. I don't know what to tell you. What do you want to hear? What do you want to hear?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I guess the answer is, that's what I'm asking.
Right.
Are you, are you...
That's what I'm trying, I'm trying to tell you, though. You're, you know...
Actually, the figures that you have, the controller's office, the police and fire retirement employees retirement, we have absolutely no...
No, no, it's part of the contract. I'm just saying, it should be part of the contract. At some point, we have to look and see what it's costing us and see if we're still getting...
Couldn't agree with you more.
I mean, I just feel that over the years, we just say, yeah, well, that's awful, okay, let's just keep going.
I don't think that's the case. I think you've got people working up here and behind the scenes.
That's what I'm saying, what are we, are we definitely going to try to address this?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Give me a call sometime, I'll let you know. Anyone else?
The selection of quality select pre-owned vehicles is bigger and better than ever here at Frenchy Selects in Messina. Check this out. How about this 2009 Chevy Malibu that was $16,000, now just $15,300. Or check out this 2008 Buick LeCern CX that was $18,500, now just $17,900. Frenchy Selects, corner of Route 37 and Parker Avenue, Messina, or visit frenchysselects.com.
This program has been brought to you by Leoneville's Beverage and Bottle Redemption Center, 301 East Dorvus Street, Messina, New York.
They did a real nice job up there.
Excellent, thank you.
It's good to hear.
Well, it's all...
It does look nice up there.
You wish you got free firewood when they dropped all the...
No. But pretty soon I'm going to need it, because I'm not going to be able to afford gas.
Not fuel, I mean.
Thank you.
Or oil.
Thanks for acknowledging the guys, they work hard.
Yes, they do, they do have a good crew. The Village employees, I got to say, have always been very, very good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, closing under next will come at, under five, open under six, old business. We have before us established a public hearing to consider adopting a local law to establish a rental properties code. Greg, would you like to...
I just, everybody got a packet, and we, first I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Patty for all the different retypes and word changes that we worked through to get it out to everybody that can hopefully inform that we can get approved. Again, thanks Patty for helping. In discussion with the mayor, we did talk about, on the second part of it, where we wanted to change our, for the material, for roofing and siding, we did talk about eliminating that at this time, and because the property maintenance code, the mayor of state, and you can have a copy of that too, does allow the code officer to make some determination. And I think that would be the, probably the better way to go than that, the change to the last part, or 286, 19D, or whatever we decided there. We chose to be decided, we'll let that go for right now. The other part of it is the registering all the properties, so in getting a local agent or owner's name or a local agent, that's what we're trying to accomplish by the, by the local law, if we get all the properties registered, so we know which ones are rentals, which ones are out-of-town landlords, which ones are in downtown. If you own a single-family home yourself, you have, if you register it, it's only, for our, we, you register it, and we'll put it in a separate file, if it's a single-family house. If you move or you sell your, or you move out of town and you decide to rent it, then you have to change your registration that it's a rental property, so the code officer knows that it is a rental property, and then that we can inspect it and try to get everything up to the minimum standard for the rental estate. If you have a rental property, you register it, that puts it subject to inspections and so we can get it up to the minimum standard. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Greg.
I've, since the last meeting, I've had a chance to review the proposed local laws, and I know a lot of work has gone into it at this point. I do have some concerns about enforceability of it, both from a legal standpoint and from a practical standpoint. It's my opinion that it needs some refinement before it's ready for review at a public hearing, and I don't know what the, I have a number of comments, I don't know if it's better for me to work with Greg.
When we get together, we're doing, in a way to save Patty a lot of time if we do it once.
That's what I'm thinking. Just a couple of general comments, I think, did you use a number of different models, Greg, to try to pull this together?
From Canton, Potsdam, from Dingington, Elmira.
Okay, and I think what sometimes happens there is if you're pulling from a number of different sources, you get a couple of provisions that are in conflict with each other, and I think there's a little bit of that in here. There's also some provisions in here with respect to condemnation and unsafe buildings that are already in different chapters in the code, and I'm not sure that they have a place in this part of it. So those are just things that I think you and I can find out.
This is our meeting, I'm...
Yeah, and if you can provide me with, I have a copy of the Village of Potsdam code, but if you could provide me with the other laws and models that you used, then I can use that and try to put something together. You've got a good framework here, but I think we just need to refine it and fine-tune it before it's ready for considerations at public hearings.
So we can table the, to vote at this point in time?
I think so. Greg and I can meet certainly before the next meeting, yeah, we can make that happen.
Do I make a motion that we table the established public hearing for rental property at this point in time? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. New business, any new business? Closing under seven, open under eight, voucher Morris.
I move that doctor's sign by trustee Carbo, myself, be approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries, thank you. Closing under eight, open under nine, monthly reports. Anything?
What on the table are you? Patricia, did you see the monthly report? Okay. That's good.
Closing under nine, open under 10, communications correspondent.
Just want to pass it on before we go. I noticed a few people who go through downtown, you see the old, you see the school business, the letter C tipped over, you look up in the left-hand corner way at the top, the whole window is gone. And I don't know, does that take care of Greg?
Yeah, we've made contact finally with Ted Chan, he's the owner of the business in New York City. We had to make contact with him, he's having a contract or something, and it's right away.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because when I first noticed it, a whole line of pigeons all the way across the top, and now I think they've all gone inside with their sleeping bags. That's the way.
And the point is, we have a, we have to get on, we have quite a task trying to find this guy. To give him the contact us, he won't even call us, we have to fax everything to him.
So this address is a commercial property?
Yeah, I don't address a commercial property, you'll have to have a local agent, somebody that we can call and see, you got to stick this right away, not...
Good. Next one.
Actually, I had noticed the door for that facility was open.
Yeah, that's...
Wow. Good luck with this. How do you notice that stuff? Are your eyes supposed to be straight ahead while you're going?
Well, I had my cataract removed, my left eye, so I could look.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Herb.
Cross-eyed.
Closing under 10, we have another closing public comment period.
Piece of cake. Ditto. Smooth sailing. Ditto.
If only everything in life was as easy as our easy-to-navigate online banking. At North Country Savings Bank, our representatives will sit with you in our Eagle Net Cafe and explain everything about online banking. North Country Savings Bank, the neighbor you can depend on. FDIC insured.
Any questions?
Come to the Orlando Chiropractic Center of Potsdam, just for the health of it. Chiropractor Dr. Leonard Orlando can help you ease the pain and the stress naturally, using the body's own healing powers. X-rays done on the premises, and they are warmly accepting new patients. You don't have to live with the pain. Call 315-268-8000 for your appointment today, and please visit their website. Most insurance is accepted.
Hi, I'm Mike Jones, we're here at StarTech, 260 East Dorvus Street, Messina, right across from Frenchy Chevrolet. We have computer, cellular, telephone, and music equipment. We service most makes and models of computers and printers. We've been serving upstate New York since 1983. We have four technicians available for fast, efficient, quality service. We have a complete in-house service facility, and we offer onsite service to most areas. Let's talk about one of the specials we've got going on.
Smokey here at StarTech with another great system. This machine was professionally hand-built by one of our technicians. It features a clear Lexan case, it also has an AMD quad-core CPU, it has 3GB of DDR2 RAM, 1TB hard drive, has a SATA DVD burner with LightScribe, it's running Windows 7OS. It comes with a full 28-inch 1080p LCD screen. It comes with a one-year warranty and lifetime labor. This machine normally lists for over $2,000, but for a limited time, we're going to sell it for $995.
This program has been brought to you by Leoneville's Beverage and Bottle Redemption Center, 301 East Dorvus Street, Messina, New York.
I'd like to say, Greg, remember when we talked about the building on Grant, not Grant, Grove Street, the door being open? That door is still open.
Contacted it, it was shut for a while.
I'm sorry, the day you contacted.
Yeah, it was shut for a while, opening it.
It's back open again, I've never seen it closed.
No, and it's a local preference, the owner.
I can't imagine, especially right there on Grove, because it is a nice place, a nice area, I can't let the kids, I mean, the windows are busted in the front of it, as you can see. It's a shame to let it go, because Grove Street is a nice neighborhood. I can't imagine the guy on the corner has to complain, he's got a beautiful home right there.
Why is that a report?
Yeah.
Will I scuff that up tomorrow, Greg?
No, you can do it.
He really gets to get through that house.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
No problem.
Anyone else? Just called. Yes, sir. And you are?
Brian Hayden, of the Daily Courier-Observer. Just a couple of quick questions. So with the, it sounds like the ordinance about the like siding and roof paneling is being dropped then, while the other is still being refined? Is that, is the village board still looking to pursue that like?
We're still going to pursue that. It's, we felt that we were kind of reinventing the wheel, where those codes are already basically in the...
Property maintenance.
Where it'll be up to Greg to sort of determine if there's something...
Well, actually, it states it's up to the code officer, so whoever that might be, it could be Greg, it could be the firemen or anything else.
Right, but there won't be a public hearing for that in particular, then?
No need to, it's already established, it's already adopted.
And is there any, there is a number of priority projects with the Regional Economic Development Council that were announced today. There's nothing from Messina on that list, is that of any concern to the village board? There's something from Governor, something from Clayton, something from Augsburg, nothing in Messina, is any response to that, or, I don't know if you saw the list yet, or...
Well, I had, I had spoken with one of the members on the board, and it was in regards to the airport expansion, but the fact that it had primarily federal funding, it really didn't qualify to be on, I think, Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it didn't really qualify for that type of boost from that group.
It depends on how, it depends on how the final actual verbiage is written. I know in the case of the rail siding in the city industrial park, it's not really going to be classified as part of the $40 million award, but the council itself will continue to work on a monthly basis to determine what funding projects from different pools of money that would have been made available, will be made available. So, you know, rail projects across the North Country, across the Southern County region, they will be basically evaluated amongst themselves over the course of the next several weeks, but they weren't included as part of the rail, or shovel-ready, here we go with projects. I haven't seen the exact, the exact list either, but I know in the case of those that we've been working on, we knew they wouldn't be part of the 40, because the other pots of money that we expect those to come from, it's sort of either, the thing with it is either a sub-process or a secondary process, but again, it really depends on, it really depends on a number of factors. The airport situation, I think, again, it's not shovel-ready, it fits in the same kind of, the same kind of funding, and I know the town submitted their consolidated funding applications through their engineering bracket.
Right, right. Thank you. Got help? Mm-hmm. Thank you. You're welcome. Anything else? No? Anything from anyone? Greg?
Question, I hate to bug you, the DBC, but did they get their audit? Done. And the other question I have is in the paper, I see that they, I'm in this issue with the I-98 reimbursement, funding, all that, who pays it, and we only got $16,000, and we only got $4,000, and we spent 20. My question is, if we got $300,000, why didn't we just pay our bills?
Well, under normal channels, Greg, that wouldn't be a permissible question, but to answer it quickly, I will say this. The $20,000 that was due to the DBC from St. Lawrence County, that was deposited into the DBC account today. Regarding the first question, what was the first question?
The first question, and I've asked it several times, the R- audit, if you failed to do for seven years.
Well, no, don't say failed to do, but I will say that that would be presented at, the 2010 audit will be presented in its final version at the... the 2010 audit will be presented in its final version at the next BDC, which is scheduled for, I think, the 29th of, the 29th of November.
Thank you. Anyone else? Closing under 11, open under 12, adjournment.
I have a request to have an executive session discuss the contract matter.
Is that good? All in favor? Aye. We'd like the attorney present, you two, and...
And I'd like Jason.
Jason? Thank you.